Clearly, what I have access to because I'm from the board versus what the public has access to.
Sure.
So that, that line is, but I think it's probably not.
Exactly. And I think the biggest key to all of it, we've got to, we've got to get their surveys. You know, that's what makes this sense. Not what I want, it's not what you want.
Right.
But, you know, it's what we want, who want, want to communicate.
Well, then people go with the things that have a voice in this building.
That's not right. You're Midwest winners, that's not.
We're getting there. We're not there yet, but we're getting there.
Wow. All right, Mr. Diet and Free Group, so.
It's not diet, they don't even make it as diet. Show, show me on here. It has zero calories.
It's diet.
It's not diet. There's no regular.
I've drank, I've drank a ton of Fresca in my life.
There's no regular.
Oh yeah, there's no regular.
That is, but what?
You can't have it.
But there is aspartame.
That's the gift that keeps giving is what that is. Look at these things. These are cute.
Now, now I can't wear my kilt.
Well, you definitely can't wear your kilt, and I can't. I like, you know me, I like to spread out, and I can't. I'm gonna need.
I know, this is, like, I need another one of these back here, just hold on.
Like, I feel, like, look at me, I'm already, I'm, I'm, we're gonna fight for these spots, I guess.
It's not gonna be funny now, if that's okay. So Travis, I can't, there's no modesty panel, so I can't wear my kilt now.
Yes, aren't we, aren't we, buddy?
I like our options, though.
Standing desk?
That's called the, uh, Harley, that's, that's the Harley.
The ape hangers, that's the ape hangers.
But you notice they're legal, they can't be above your shoulders, so this is good.
All right, where am I gonna put bags?
Oh my god.
You know what I could do? I could do this, and be a Steve Irson advertisement. I'll put my, I'll put right there on the camera the whole time.
Hi, Jordan.
Kenny, how are you?
Oh. Okay, how can we mess with Michelle and move her cheese?
We can do mess with her, put a desk in the closet. First thought.
Ooh, that's a good idea. No, no, we can take the desk away and just give everyone a little tricycle.
Hi. There we go. Do the budget cuts.
Is that kind of his hazing?
I don't think so. She's not a new board member.
So we don't need you, or you, or you, or you, or you.
He said little desk. I didn't imagine.
Does this go any lower?
Lower?
Yeah, for this. How do we lower?
Oh, uh, what about this little foot thing here?
That's crazy.
Yeah.
How do you go up and down?
There's a foot thing.
Ah, there we go.
You have to push pretty hard to down it.
Oh, I think it might be there.
How about the max? All right. I'll put it real high. Just put it real high, then.
How about use the space on this?
This is good. This is a good move, though. We don't need those big huge desks. So I wonder if anybody will stand at their podium. Interesting idea.
Are these set up to stand here? Can I go up that height?
Hello.
How are you?
Hello. Oh, that was fun.
We were just happy that the delivery service was around.
It was, it really sucked.
Like, guys, I mean, it really worked.
Help.
So now, what can we do to Patricia? Maybe Patricia gets a little chair now.
And which one? Every time we present, we'll raise it up.
Oh, this one? Oh, to put it, to put it back down. You step on the pedal and you have to push pretty hard on top.
So how often do you stand at your desk, Travis?
Uh, most of the time.
Most of the time?
Now, can you give me a seat that raises too, so that way I can raise my desk?
I voted for the, I voted for the tricycle over there, but, you know, he found the key to it. Which was great, because you sat down.
Well, well, about raising the desk, but then didn't want to struggle to put it back down, so like, okay.
I was gonna hide your desk.
Yep. Kenny wanted to put it in the closet, so, yeah. It was a group effort. Kids at heart.
What?
Kids at heart.
Kids at heart.
I need like a little guard, like the gutter ball guards.
What we're gonna have to be careful of is hitting the microphones.
So Travis, does the blinking shelf is on, mine wasn't blinking, and now it is, does that, is that, is somebody else controlling that, or is it on us?
I don't know why. Tap on it and you hear something, like tap on the speaker. Yeah, it's working.
Mine's definitely.
Oh, you are dead. You don't even have blink.
I'm not on.
There you go. Today's fourth.
Heard that a lot today.
Oh, I'm sure. I know.
It's not gonna talk on the screen.
No, that's okay, thank you.
Sure?
Yeah. What I need in front of me, actually.
You bet.
See, look at me delegating. My laptop is like too big.
So are we starting the meeting now by electronic time, or by watch, mechanical watch time?
Um, I don't have a mechanical watch. Would you wanna be in charge of that?
Oh, way to delegate.
I mean, I have a lot of mechanical watches, but none of them have a battery. They won't do as much good. Is she texting? I thought she, I thought I was gonna look up and see. Oh, she's watching.
Well, I told him I can't wear my kilt.
Please don't.
Oh my goodness, well, please don't wear it. I can only take so much.
Nobody needs that.
Nobody needs that. Not even your own family needs that.
We tried to get my son to wear one to his wedding. His bride said, absolutely.
Good for her. A good, strong woman.
I do what you did. You can. I do it low. I do mine low all the time anyway, but if you wanna higher, you push this and then lift, I believe.
The one, push it.
I think it's spring, low, is what I thought, so.
Everybody could have it in a different way. Like a note.
All right, you went tilty. I like that. I need some tilty. Yeah, it is, okay. There we go. There we go. That's what I want.
Stuff's gonna be falling. That's good.
Castle tunnel position.
It does have four meals. Oh, it does?
No.
Greetings. Is this you? Oh, yes. Unloading and stuff. Couldn't stay on.
Hello, Vice President. Ladies and gentlemen. Hi, Mr. Petrie.
Hello, hello.
And everybody else? Are we all here? Oh, look at us. Just wait for me.
Good stuff.
Um, can I order a drink holder for next?
That's a lot.
Detroit, I'll bring a whole sock.
You're committed to your cup, then.
I tried to get you a little skinny bottle, so.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I meant, like, somebody can find something for us.
I'm gonna phone holder up here.
Oh, yeah, that'd be nice. I have seven o'clock. Are we all ready to go, or do we need a minute?
You do what you need to do, you're president.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's call our meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving right along to section two, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any commentary about that? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Section three, consent agenda items. And tonight, we have minutes from our April twentieth meeting, minutes from April sixth meeting, and dispersments. Administration recommends and I so move that the board approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, anyone have any questions, comments, anything to move? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to reports. We start with Dr. Frack.
All right, I have a couple items here. If the pandemic wasn't enough, if ransomware wasn't enough, if water main breaks weren't enough, we had a chemical fire in Afton. And so that was last week. We're, we're hitting everything, getting all out of the way this year, so I appreciate the, the quick action of everyone involved. So our administrators, teachers, transportation department, and so we were literally kind of in the middle of dismissal when we got that message. And so we all kind of went into the mode of working with our first responders, working with other folks who were, you know, on the scene, trying to give us guidance on what they thought was best for the schools to do, while also being mindful that we had parents right in the middle of picking kids up, had parents expecting kids to be home on the buses. And so definitely tried to navigate things as best we could, appreciate people's patience. Uh, we, we got some feedback that, you know, even though it's, it's certainly an inconvenience and it's a disturbance, we do try to keep people updated on what's going on. And so, you know, one of the safety features, as our safety through it, specifically when, when I asked Dr. Daughtry to kind of do an overview of where we had some holes in our safety plan throughout the district, two-way radios was kind of spotted as just not much communication. So other than cell phone, other than maybe a couple people that can communicate through two-way radios, we really had very limited ability in an emergency situation to feel like you were connected together, as opposed to one person calling another person who then has to call another person. So certainly, that two-way radio coverage came in handy, knowing what's going on with the buses, and really just being able to listen, instead of having to have someone update you by calling you separately. So I appreciate everybody's work to, you know, integrate and, and update those systems, and certainly in a time like that, you, you figure out why that, why that's important. It's important on a daily basis, just for regular things that come up within the buildings, but certainly when you need to communicate across the district with, with another means. So I appreciate everyone's work to get that system in place, and I think that does help us in turn communicate with our parents more timely, because people are already looped in to what's going on, as opposed to making a bunch of separate calls or sending a bunch of separate emails. So that's a little bit about the chemical fire. We, we were ready to let individuals use our high school that was designated as a possible overflow site for people to come if they were displaced, and if they needed to be displaced for an entire evening. Ended up, we didn't need that. Likewise, we had a couple bus drivers that agreed to be on standby in case there was transportation issues that arise to get people to and from. So I appreciate everybody's flexibility with kind of starting to prepare for that, even though ultimately it ended up that we didn't need to, to put that into action. Uh, second item I, I wanted to mention, this is something we shared with our strategic planning committee, and then I also put out a video for staff and parents on the results of our parent satisfaction and student engagement surveys. I attached the slides that I used for that video recording. And so this is something very similar to what we did with the employee engagement survey, and this is something we anticipate doing annually. This was the first year that we did it, and so ultimately, we'll eventually have a couple years of, I guess you would say, comparable information, but we're gonna use this to kind of help drive our improvement efforts. And so just wanted everybody to know, this is something that we look at to help drive our improvement, and you can see kind of what those results were from parents and students. The participation and the overall rating for parents and students was very similar, and so I thought that was kind of interesting in that their, their feedback, although different when you look at the individual questions, overall, it was very similar. Another item that is becoming more and more relevant is the ability for students to participate in vaccination process, so sixteen and older. Um, we've kind of got our first event that we tried to help coordinate in conjunction with other districts coming up, and so we haven't necessarily held one in our facilities at our site. And if that becomes a need, we certainly will look into that, but we're already getting kind of some anecdotal feedback as nurses are keeping up with that, that there are definitely some of our older students that are engaging in getting vaccinated, and so that, that's something that even before we pushed out information on specific events, that, that has started. And so clearly, there's, there's interest with some parents and students to, to do that. And then certainly, information here recently that possibly in the near future, you know, twelve and above can begin participating. So that's something that we'll continue to try to work with families, continue to try to do whatever we can to support those efforts, if that's something that, that family's desire to engage with. And then kind of, uh, two more things that I wanted to update you on. We, um, we did get our initial interest with Virtual Academy, and so I wanted to just briefly update you on that. Obviously, not near the interest next year, as, as there was this year. So about seventy students right now, and, and half of those are at the high school level, and so we're currently working with our, you know, district and building administrators to figure out what are some of the best options. I think it's probably definitely gonna look a little bit different than this year. So it didn't necessarily seem like there was any one grade level where, you know, we would probably be able to just allocate one of our existing teachers to just serve that role like we did this year. So we're kind of having to look through all of our options and then decide what are the things we think would be best, and then certainly we'll be reaching out to parents and try to get that squared away before the school year ends, so that everyone's on the same page headed into the summer and then headed into next school year. So that's kind of the information that I wanted to share. I do have one more item, but I wanted to pause there to see if there was any questions, feedback, comments, or anything else connected to, to these items, yeah.
Uh, two things real quick. One, I received a very, a number of very strong, positive comments about the handling of the chemical fire within schools and the communication, in addition to some of the information that you shared. And then the, the other one was on the Virtual Academy, was that, did you have a sense that it was gonna be at that level, or was that a surprise, or?
Yeah, we had anecdotally gotten information from other districts that it was significantly lower, and at the same time, Afton had a significantly higher percentage than most districts, so you never know how exactly that's gonna translate. So I, I think we thought it might be a stretch to, to just use a similar plan in K through eight. That, and then what we did this year, I think we thought, you know, it, it would be hard to, to maybe justify enough students in a particular grade level to just allocate a teacher to do that. So, uh, maybe we anticipated them being just a tad bit higher, but I also think that, you know, it's, it's one of those things when, when folks have, have not experienced being in school. I think there's just a clamoring to, even though maybe virtual did go well for, for some folks, I think there maybe is just a sense that, let's go ahead and, and get back to what, what we, what we experienced. And I think the, um, kind of the very quick turnaround with staff getting vaccinated, and then maybe how quickly it looks like there'll be those opportunities for students. I think maybe that played a little bit into people feeling a lot, a lot more comfortable, that not only do we kind of have a track record this year with making schools safe, but then when you layer in hopefully high levels of vaccination, I think people are feeling really good about what that environment will look like next year.
We've had a good year. You can have mine back.
What's that?
I probably, and that is a sentiment that I feel I've shared with many parents.
That's right. Anything else on these items? All right. I did wanna pause for one more item, and I didn't put it on there, but I do wanna take a minute and recognize, uh, this is kind of our, our first meeting from start to finish with our new executive members, and I did wanna take time to recognize our former president, Patricia Zahn, for serving in that role for three years. And so certainly, it always appreciate as a superintendent, having a good relationship, having a, a good working relationship with the board president. And so she's the only board president I know, so when, when I took over as superintendent, uh, we, we've been together, making sure that, that we stay connected as a board. So I appreciate the effort, not only that she puts in for the board, but then also extra effort with her and I staying connected and making sure we're, we're working together collaboratively. And so she's coming up, I believe, on a decade of being on the board, so ten years of total service, I think in July, and then the last three as board president. So kind of as a show of appreciation from me, District Administration, and the Afton School District, I would like to present her with this plaque.
Oh, I love it.
My gavel.
I should, you know what? I'm gonna take my.
You finally.
Hold on, hold on.
I finally get the.
Or I might be in trouble later if I don't capture this moment.
Well deserved job.
Yeah, and Patricia, we actually have a thank you for you as well. Um, you have led us through really hard stuff. What a strange three years in the world to, to be a president on a school board. And I was just, I was reflecting on some of the things that I love most about you and that you have served us so well with, and, uh, the four that rose to the top for me were your level head, your love for students, your attention to detail, and your commitment to punctuality. For that, we appreciate you so much, so thank you. That, that is for later. You're, you finally got your gavel. It's too late to use it, but you finally have one. All right, so moving along in section four, reports. Next up, we have four point oh two, Student Services Committee Report. We have our Dr. McGee to present that.
Evening, everyone. Uh, I wanna just take a moment, you have the, the rundown, but I just wanna, uh, recognize and celebrate Leah and Julia. They have done a tremendous job of leading our counselors and support, uh, staff in regards to just having a vision for what they wanna see for our counselors, and then actually making all that stuff happen. So they've done a tremendous job. I'm really proud of the work they've done and cannot say enough good things. So, um, I'm sad to say that Leah will be transitioning on and will be having a, a new leader, uh, in the, in that role to support Julia and help Julia. But, uh, again, um, if you see either of them, give them a pat on the back and a high five, uh, from a socially distanced place, uh, 'cause they, they did a fantastic job this year. Uh, any questions about the, the, kind of the final meeting of the year for the counselors? All right, you should see a Student Services Program Evaluation whenever we have sort of all the pieces. Some of those pieces come in from Mary and Marilyn, from a career and college career readiness perspective. Some of them come in at the end of the year with some of our counseling numbers. So you should see that in June, uh, based on the schedule, so just wanted you to know.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, four point oh three, Finance Committee Report. Sir Fedcheck, are you doing that one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, at this point, we've already, uh, talked about the two main items, uh, here, that we talked about in the finance meeting. So we mostly talked about budget revision three and what that looked like, and we also took a look, and we had very similar conversation about the preliminary budget for next year. We did also review our investments, uh, which we do quarterly, and we talked about how we're not making any money on investments this year. Pretty much it. Mike, can you, can you put anything in?
Nope, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. We'd already covered a lot of it, so.
We've heard a lot from you recently, so. All right, moving on to four point oh four, District Safety Committee Report. Dr. Daughtry and Andrew.
Yeah, so our big outcome from that meeting is that, uh, when Erica Chandler and I meet beforehand and we say that we really don't have any big burning issues to talk about, we don't mean that literally we won't. That was a true comment that we made when we were talking about setting up the agenda for this meeting. So really, the, uh, good turnout, as usual, uh, for people. We met online and talked a little bit about our renewing our reunification process, some of the updates that you've already heard as far as facilities and things like that, so if there's any questions.
I know you weren't here, just be thankful it wasn't like Prax Air when it went up. Oh, that was bad, I was expecting that. Flying bottles.
Oh, gosh.
That was terrible.
As good of an outcome, really, as you can have from something like that, so thankfully, nobody was hurt.
Does the meeting help? We have two board members, and neither were able to attend.
They weren't, and I did know that ahead of time. Uh, in the case of, I mean, I, I knew that day, and in the case at my house, my husband is part of that meeting, so I.
I was on, Anna was on, and I was watching.
I knew her with her.
I just wasn't physically logged in myself, but we have the kids, so we were about to.
Anything else on that one? All right, four point oh five. All right, four point oh five District Wellness Committee Report. Dr. Dotree, that would be you as well.
Yeah, so talked a little bit about, I know this is going to surprise you, COVID. One of the things that I did think that Nurse Lilla did a nice job of was talking about and really with the help of Paige Etting at the high school, that we have been tracking students and we have about fifty students already in the district that have had one vaccine at least. So considering that there really hasn't many mass sponsored events that we've, I thought that was pretty good progress. Talked a little bit about just some items for next year as far as food service, the obviously the subsidized meals continuing to next year. And really ended with with that. There wasn't as many building updates this time just for the fact that we've had, you know, so so few of the health initiatives that we'd like to do during the year have been kind of pushed to the side a little bit with COVID. So highlights going into next year is that I I feel really good about, we've got a good inclusive group and, you know, really talking about where can we go as far as mental health goes because I think, as Michelle pointed out during the meeting, that's going to be a a big key area for next year as kids return to school.
You know, one thing that I hadn't thought about before that you just reminding about the food extending, I wish, I I hope someone will be doing studies on when schools offer free kids to all, free food to kid, all kids all the time. What impact does that have on kids who are hungry, kids' attention? You know, it's hard to even think what the study would look like, but it'll be interesting after two years of kids being fed all the time to go back to a system where that's not the case anymore. I just wonder what the impact will be. I'm really glad they extended that. Any other comments or questions about the Wellness Committee meeting?
I do have, Michelle, not about the Wellness Committee, but just to circle back, something that I I probably should have put in the superintendent update, I just recorded a message today that's going to go out tomorrow. So this is Teacher Appreciation Week. So certainly would be remiss without, you know, pausing to to recognize that. And we've been trying to to do small tokens of appreciation each day. Claire's been very integral with helping to kind of brainstorm what what things might they appreciate. Don't normally do something every, something different every day. So we tried to to make sure there was something each day that was going to the folks in the building to show our appreciation. So very, very much there's, I don't think there's much we can give or say that would do it justice, but we're trying, we're we're trying, even if it's symbolic, even if it's, you know, but if ever there was a year to pause and try to do something, it would be this year. So just want to say, you know, definitely appreciate their efforts for the entire year as we finish out the year. And so it's it's definitely something that, you know, would encourage staff to even reach out to one another and and there's, although I think people appreciate being recognized by the superintendent and people that they don't normally work with, it probably means maybe a little more when it comes from the person down the hall that you work with that sees how hard you're working every day. So encourage people to do that this week, those that you know have have been doing everything they can this year. And then on another note, May first was School Principals Day. And so thank you to our school principals who are obviously part of that team with our teachers in the building and all of our other staff members trying to 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 make this year the best year possible. So wanted to mention that before we move on from reports. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the hard things is, I mean, families love to celebrate those days and we're so limited in terms of what we can, normally there'd be meals being dropped off at school and all kinds of things and that's also limited. So thank you for reminding us of that.
I did have one comment about the Wellness Report. I wanted to just mention that I was very impressed that we're still, that Nurse Lovinson has been working on some grants and that we've been very successful in years past. I'm glad to see that that's moving forward as well.
Yes. She seems to have a real talent for seeking out different fun things and applying for them and she must write a good grant proposal because she even gets a lot of them, so.
Mom and Son's are pretty awesome.
They are awesome, although she got my son attached to them and they're also expensive when they're not being donated.
That's right.
I'm just happy to see us being involved and going after some of those opportunities and continuing to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, I lost my tab. Okay, moving on, section five, a citizen comments limited to agenda items, and we do not have any citizen comments limited to agenda items tonight. So we will go on to section six, school improvement. Mr. Lovinson.
Yeah, so first up will be six point oh, excuse me, six point oh one, the Summer School twenty twenty one update. And I don't, is we all here?
Yep. I asked, I asked Lauren Widmer to join us and then also Katie Mears is going to follow up after her. And so I don't necessarily know that this was necessary, but given that we had to do summer school very different last year, completely virtual and and, you know, even even before recently, you know, obviously Lauren's been working on this all year, we definitely aspired to do some in-person options. So we've been progressively trying to make sure that that's a priority. And then as, you know, as things have started to evolve, it seems like there certainly is a desire to to take advantage of our in-person summer school. And so that's why I was just wanting to give you kind of just a barometer of what is that desire for in-person summer school? And then likewise, do we have other options that we're trying to make make available? So that's really what I wanted her to do is just kind of help build your understanding of of what's out there and kind of what is that level of interest with the various programs. So appreciate her coming tonight and putting this together. And then after after she wraps up, we'll have Katie Mears come up and talk about a couple other summer components. So I'll turn it over to Lauren.
All right. Well, good evening. It's been a while since I've seen you in person. So in terms of in-person interest, we actually have more students enrolled in in-person summer school this year than in any previous year that I have data on. So in the past, when we've offered summer journey at the elementary school level, we've had approximately three hundred and fifty students in person, between seventy-five and a hundred students on a waitlist. We currently have four hundred and forty students enrolled. That number's gone up since I wrote this last week. Our waitlist has actually gone down to five. We are able to place a number of students, but we continue to have a slow trickle in. So being able to be really responsive to family input, being able to place every family that applied by our deadline, we said this is when you need to apply for our first consideration for placement, we were able to find a spot for every student. Interest continued and in conversations with Dr. Dotree, the business office and HR, we actually hired two additional teachers to make sure that we could try to place every student that was interested. So that waitlist is kind of a living document in terms of that's not the place where student names go and just rest that as families notify us of changing plans and as we gain interest, we do have those ongoing conversations to make sure we can place as many students as possible. For our K through eight virtual option, our interest was probably proportionally about the same as Virtual Academy for next year. K eight total, we have fifteen students. We have one teacher that is certified K through nine, actually covering that, so we do have one teacher for consistent programming. And a feature that we're going to use this year that I'm actually really excited about is we were able to use a platform that was able to tap into our NWEA testing data for our students and it creates customized learning paths for each student based on their, where they're at band wise and their RIT score and build custom skill sets to meet their needs. So each student will have about the same amount of learning experiences per day and program wide, but they're not going to be the same for each kid because each of our students are in different places. So that's a pretty fun feature. I'm very excited to see how that works for our our students. At the high school, our current enrollment of three hundred and seven is a bit higher overall compared to what we've had in the past, but breaking that down by semester, we have two hundred and seventy-six students enrolled for semester one. Last year, our enrollment for semester one was about two hundred and eighty-four, so not a huge change. With the help of Dr. McGee, I sent a survey out to our SLAHA group and surveyed St. Louis County districts, twenty of them responded. And the vast majority of districts said that they were seeing the same thing, that they were seeing either no change in their enrollment or a slight uptick. So it was good to know that what we're seeing in the Afton School District is about equal to what other county districts are seeing. Other high points for this summer at the high school, our enrichment enrollment, we have the option that students can self-enroll in electives. It used to just be PE and health for incoming freshmen. We've expanded that to over a dozen electives. This year, we currently have fifty-six students that have chosen to do that. Last year it was thirty-seven, the year before that it was fifteen. So it's exciting to see that we have that growing interest in students that are proactively looking for ways to stay engaged throughout the summer. So any questions on any of those details or maybe details that aren't on there?
I have, I wonder.
High volume chance, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, sorry. I wanted to give everyone a chance. With the NWA motivated classes, that sounds amazing. What is, I mean, if it does turn out to be spectacular and the students come to the end and we think, wow, what a great way to target, what are the opportunities to use something like that going forward? Is it just a summer school kind of opportunity or?
So it is actually, it is a piece of courseware that is traditionally used during the full school year. So the option is that you can link with either your NWEA data or you can have students take a pre-assessment. And usually it creates a path for building math and ELA skills for the entire year. It's an intervention tool. But in just having conversations about Afton's specific needs and what we wanted in programming, looking at how last summer went, we we were able to come to work with their platform designers and say, we only want this amount of content per day for this number of days. So it is something that's available K through eight. Again, usually through the traditional school year, but it is an outside resource that we don't currently use during the traditional school year.
It sounds really amazing. I can't wait to hear how it goes for those kids. That's really cool.
Me as well.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Sorry. I like this quarter.
I knew you were over there, but Katie Mears, I haven't been here in person. I just kind of wanted to touch on what numbers look like for ESY and for USS because I know that's a little different this year. So we do know that ESY is what an IEP team decides, so that's why the students come. We did have over sixty kids qualify and we have about forty confirmed yes. So we are still waiting on a couple of people that we have reached out to. And then we have other people who just won't be able to make it because of other needs in the summer. So ESY is predominantly just to work on those IEP goals and it's important that those students maintain their progress over the summer. And so USS is something that Special School District decided to do after they realized that we did have some extended school closures and they wanted to offer some in-person opportunities. So luckily we are in person and we are planning to do summer school in person. And because of that, we were able to offer this additional opportunity of universal summer school for the whole day. So students who have ESY written into their IEP will be allowed to go to ESY in the morning and then will be able to extend their day for USS. Kids who do not qualify for ESY, all students who have an IEP, those students that just have a speech IEP, those students that have more significant disabilities, it doesn't matter, as long as they have an IEP, they are able to attend USS. And basically USS will not look like ESY in the way that they will work on individual student goals. They won't be working from the IEP. It's just an enrichment activity for them to get a little bit more knowledge in literacy, numeracy, and SEV. So in Afton, this looks different in all twenty-two districts. In Afton, what that looks like and in other schools that use summer journey, most of us are actually just piggybacking on summer journey. So we did ask our parents to sign up for summer journey and USS if they thought their students needed additional support. Some people did and some people didn't. And so Lauren and I have worked together quite a bit to make sure that those numbers align. And currently we have about eighty students enrolled in USS through summer journey. So depending on student need, we obviously are looking individually, even though it's not about the IEP, we do know that some students have more needs than others. And so we will have some opportunities for some self-contained classes where they can work on numeracy, literacy, and social emotional development, but just at their own pace and with fun enrichment activities. And then we have the other students that will participate in summer journey with the support of special educators. We have twenty teachers and paraprofessionals that we have employed for ESY for those forty students that have been a part of ESY. And then in addition to that, we have hired an additional twenty teachers and paraprofessionals to help with USS. So those will be teachers that are assisting in summer journey classes as well as having self-contained rooms. I know you guys had some other stuff. I I did try and write up some other things, but I know you had time to read that. So here, if you have any questions, we're excited about the opportunity. I guess the only thing that I will point out is that Special School District has said that this is the only year we will offer USS, but ESY is obviously annually.
Any questions from the board?
Sounds like a great summer program we're going to have this year, just so robust. I'm so excited. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Six point oh one was informational only. We're going to move on to six point oh two. This would be the Curriculum Program Evaluation by Dr. McGee.
Evening. Long time no see. Hello, all. We've have the Curriculum Program Evaluation for you. It's a rather lengthy report. Apologize for that, but there were a lot of things that I wanted to include and didn't want to leave out. Specifically want to recognize that there are two items that are proposed goals for next year. Traditionally, I often seek to have three or four goals, but recognizing that with, you know, seventy to eighty curriculum projects on our dashboard, that's going to really dedicate a lot of my time and want to really focus on making sure that that gets done right and with all the details in place. And then in addition to that, I feel really good about the place that we're in for our implementing our new process, but I do want to make sure that I'm pulling some focus groups together, I'm getting some input, and I'm dedicating time to doing that and implementing that correctly as well. So those two things, even though, you know, at the end it's kind of feels like a deflated balloon that you only have two goals, they are two pretty big ones and I'm I'm kind of excited about both of them and being able to kind of transition officially. Any questions?
I'm sure we'll have plenty later.
I really appreciated all the detail in this report and I actually, I did like the way it was just broken down into each of the very distinct line items and then the people who are associated with it. It kind of helped me as I was going through it, so thank you. It was a lot.
Yes.
But I really appreciated it.
And I love to see just the two areas of goal because I know what next year is going to be to get the rest of the curriculum done. So I'm glad to see you let yourself focus in on what you're most geared towards next
Everybody good?
Yes.
Thanks, Dr. McGee.
Thank you.
Administration recommends an ISO move that the board approved Curriculum Program Evaluation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? None seen. All those in favor signify by I.
I.
All those opposed?
I went, sat back down, I have the next two items.
Oh.
I just heard Kenny say uh-oh. I was like, what's happening?
I thought I was going to see if he could get that, beat you back there before you.
All right, once you carry seven yay to nothing, I don't know, is that?
Zero, yeah. There you go.
It's like a ballgame, I don't know. Try to get in it. All right.
Board wins.
The board wins. Kids win, Dr. Brown, kids win. All right, moving on to section seven, curriculum. Seven point oh one, Curriculum Projects for First Read. And this was an exciting week for First Reads.
Yes, you see, you're you're starting to sort of pick up now. You know, we're we're coming to a rhythm at the end of the year and we're we're finding some space for some conversations. And, you know, when you see myself and another name, that means that I'm I'm literally sitting with them. So some of the best conversations I've had around what what's going on are sitting beside our teachers like Joe Hubbard and kind of really getting to uncover what what are the great things that the kids have experienced doing and then builds strong relationships for for the future and being able to to repeat this process for for the future. So we have a number of projects there and a number of edits that went on over the last week or so. So if you looked at it, you know, if you look through the link, you're always getting the live version, but I'm always trying to make sure that the PDF is the most accurate. So those did get get updated. So there were a couple edits that happened throughout the week, this week, and even up until today, just to make sure that it was ready to go and clean for UCF. Any questions on the First Read?
Lot of information. I think Mr. Albert is doing a great job. I think, you know, he's brought excitement to the industrial arts. My sergeant one today said he learned that.
I know my son-in-law today said he learned how to cut drywall. And I was like, well, he finished the basement last year. Why don't we do that? He's now doing electrical and switches and it's just, you know, I think, I think that's, he's got, he's doing a great job.
I actually enjoyed reading through that, the industrial technology. Both my kids had a good time in that class.
Yeah, and we had not had anything formally written down or even tied to standards. So being able to sit with him and say, like, validate the work that he was doing really honors the, the progress that he's making in that class with, with kids and giving experiences they'll get nowhere else other than that room.
I love the MyPath and I would encourage anyone who hasn't gotten to interact with that. This year's been weird, but when the kids do their presentations and whatnot, you can really get a feel for what they're doing when you get to participate in that way.
Is that a new? Okay, it is. I don't remember my kids doing it, but I thought they read it and I thought, this is amazing.
Yeah.
I really liked it.
It's one of the things that Mrs. Whitman.
Yeah, I believe last year. Yes, last year's our first year. Sorry, Lauren helps make all that, all the dreams come to life in that course. And it was one that we investigated that we saw over at Oakville High School and saw that there were some really great gains that were happening out of that and the opportunity to bring it over here has been great. Luckily, we, we stole the right person from the Melville School district that knew how to run it. So she does an amazing job.
Yeah, last year even gave, right away gave a presentation at MSBA on it, which is why I know as much about it as I do because I was there and I got to hear her talk about it. Anything else? All right, so those we will look at again next week. So if anything comes up, feel free to reach out about that. Seven point oh two, these are the projects that were for second read. So it's second grade math, honors biology, stock market strategies, and project lead the way biomedical innovations. I did not remember anything big that we were waiting on with that.
Cryptocurrencies.
Well, I'm just gonna let you handle that.
Wasn't added.
Yeah, they've got inside track. We appreciate it.
Okay, well, administration recommends and ISO move that the board approve the curriculum as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
I'll let you choose, Claire. Okay, anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. McGee. All right, moving on to section eight, personnel items. Mr. Edgar.
Okay, eight point zero one, some staffing changes. Start off, we have three transfers from staff assistants to early childhood classroom leaders. And then we have total of six resignations. And one is assistant director of building and grounds, custodian, speech and debate coach, two of them, and custodian from Rogers, staff assistant from Gach, summer school staff assistant. And then we have some employment recommendations. We have two summer school K through five teachers, a social studies teacher at Rogers, and then we have a JV cheerleading head coach for fall and winter and a boys varsity soccer assistant coach. And then, that's it. Administration recommends and ISO move the approval of the staffing changes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Justin, any questions or comments?
No, I'm just now looking, getting to look at the, the application on the social studies teacher as I was excited to read about him. I know that was kind of ongoing during the day today. So it's exciting to see that got taken care of.
Here, I had two comments.
Okay.
The first one was, I was saddened to see that we're losing two of the debate coaches at the same time. I hope that doesn't say anything about the program because I think that's an important opportunity for students. So if there's, there's something going on, let's address it. And then the other piece was that for the new hires, for the extracurricular, again, there was only one applicant for these. And I know that we talked about that in the past and that's just making sure that everybody who needs to know and wants to know about these opportunities has them. And so I'm not really sure how that process goes. Not really a question, just a comment.
Okay. All right, then, so all those in favor, would you say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Looks like motion carries seven to zero. So we're gonna move on to eight point oh two for another staffing change. There's a.
I can provide a little bit of background if you need to.
Is it a?
So this, you may recall, previous meeting, we had a counseling opening at Gach Intermediate, a resignation. And so our SEL interventionist has been helping fill that, that person. Not only did they resign, they were away from their job for a little while this year. And so we, since that person had been filling in, that person is certified to do the job, we decided to backfill the position internally. And so this person, you know, when we did all of the extra days, when you approved the extra duties, extra days, this person wasn't on that list because at that time, we, we didn't know that they were gonna fill that position. And so since the one person is resigning, they're not gonna need their extra days beyond the school year. And so since this person is stepping into that role, it's really just utilizing the days that were already there. It's just a different person is gonna utilize them to, to get off to a good start in that role. And so that's, that's why this item is being, being brought forward to you.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And then also just this person who was filling SEL interventionist, we're backfilling that position too internally. So, so we'll still have people in those important positions that are qualified to do them.
So we're supposed to have a board member step away so we can vote on this?
I, I think it was separate just because, I, I think it was listed separate just because it was an item that typically would have shown up on like the extra duty list or a stipend list. So they didn't want it to lump in with, with everything else. I think that's why it was, it was separated out.
I was trying to figure out whose niche she was or something. I was waiting for something to get off.
Yep.
It's not me. Who is it?
Guilty by association.
All right, then, well, that goes out. Administration recommends and ISO move the approval of the staffing change as presented. Can I have a second? Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, section nine, citizen comments, not related to agenda items. And we have no citizen comments not related to agenda items. So we'll move on to section ten, which is our curriculum workshop. So this will be a time for us to have a less formal conversation and really dig into curriculum. We're pretty early. Do we want to take a break for a few minutes? Do we wanna keep going? What's the feeling of?
Are we gonna move?
I don't know. How are we?
I was, I think, to keep from, I think if I would have thought about this previously, I may have put you guys down on the lower level so that we could move ours. So I think if it's agreeable, I'm just gonna have Dr. McGee join us here and Claire is gonna take his spot back there and that way we're, we're somewhat together here. But in the future, I think maybe when we have a workshop, we'll just move all of the, we'll move all of the desks down here. That way we can.
The way we can see each other and talk to each other.
I mean, we can make it a little more of a circle and just some of us move back a little bit. Okay, so let's, let's take a five-minute break if we're gonna move desks around anyway and we'll come back.
I think we're just going into a half-circle sort of thing.
I think when there's like a table in front of me, I feel comfortable shifting more, so it's okay. But now, I feel like the camera is showing my whole body, so I'm trying not to keep moving all the time.
Will you bring table skirts?
There is zero way. I am not gonna fidget, so they're just gonna see it. I am a fidgeter.
Especially because I was like, I put the umbrella down and it's like, all right, that's really close to you. And I was like, I probably should reach down and take care of that. Now we're being filmed. Like, what is she doing down there?
This, you're in my old spot and I love that spot. And you can sort of like sit back if you've had enough being viewed. That was the best. I've sat in a lot of seats, but that was my favorite one ever. Back when Tom was president, that was where I always ended up sitting. I don't know why. I don't remember. We weren't alphabetical, so, well, maybe we better put me over in that corner.
We're over here.
Hmm?
We're over here.
Yeah, I don't know. For some reason, I was consistently in that chair for a while.
I just wanted to move my legs a little bit.
Yeah. Well, I was just saying, I, I feel funny shifting as much as I usually do in these terrible seats because there's nothing in front of me, but I'm gonna be able to sit in the seats.
I'm all right with that, too.
I think I might have to get myself like a gel cushion or something.
I'm gonna miss it when I go to the office. I'm gonna stand in the dust at the office.
Or we could all stand up for a while if we want to. I think we have to make a consistent decision, though, otherwise it's gonna be distracting to people if some of us are standing.
It's good stuff.
You know what? I forgot to look at the time. Patricia, did you look at when we, because you're so timely. What time do we take a break?
We'll just say two minutes.
This is a two-minute warning, two-minute warning. I just, I'm responsible, but I don't watch time as closely as you do, so. It is not in my nature to be so watchful of the time like it is yours. I started at seven, even though you weren't, you weren't even totally ready and I still started.
Oh, goodness. Probably shouldn't even joke about that stuff.
Look at that. We're just all, we're all so well-trained. All right, section ten, curriculum workshop. Dr. McGee.
We've been in the hall. All right, we have a, a slide deck that is linked onto the agenda. If you check out the PDF, you'll get one version. If you check out the live link, you'll get a couple extra things that I just didn't know if we were gonna need or not, but I went ahead and threw in an extra slide or two in there just in case I needed a reference.
Where's the live link for this slide? Oh, it's up here. Gotcha. You're not the problem.
Four, you know, two of the, the three parts of tonight's conversation obviously were presented in a, you know, video ahead of time. The whole reason behind that is, is really hard in this environment to kind of walk you through a prototype or navigate through a scenario. So being able to prove that is, is helpful and I appreciate you being willing to give up the time outside of here to, to be a part of that. But that does allow you a little more information coming in and be able to kind of navigate. So really wanted to talk just briefly around what questions you had from the video or things that maybe jumped out at you that we can either expand on and then wanna then spend the bulk of the time focusing on the approaches to kind of what this summer into next year and kind of some of the approaches that we'll be learning around. So I'll start out with that prompt, looking through kind of the first section. Were there any questions from the video or things that jumped out at you?
Do, do you have a feel for any type of representation of what the community is gonna be able to see eventually in the site? Does that, I didn't get, I wasn't, I'm not able to see the line kind of between where we, what we see as a board versus what the public's gonna see in the public side.
That's gonna be really hard for you unless you're willing to open up an in-kind need window. And that's like within Chrome, being able to know where that button is. You know, for us, we get permission to everything, but we really do have to experience it through that other window of being able to navigate that. So the best thing I can do is, you know, on slide seventeen, the link to the community member experience will take you to that website. It, it is live. You can access it anywhere. Like, any community member can access it. But we are continuing to work on dating that and making it available for, for people with the, with the idea that it is most likely gonna be available and ready July one of 2022, which is not being the next year, but as we get into that following year because I'll be able to have the finished products of all our curriculum by hopefully May, you know, hopefully June to clean up the website, make sure it's ready to be published and connected to our, our district website and then I'll be able to pull these.
Is there a good example to look at?
Yeah, so if you, like I said, on slide seventeen, clicking on that link and if you, I, I built it out pretty well about science because that's obviously an area of strength for me. So that allows you to sort of went through all the steps that we'll be able to give a parent kind of a feel for what that would look like and feel like.
That's very good. I'm in an in-kind need window.
Yeah, so the hard part that I think is the big shift is like BYOC just gives you this big list, which is what we have, which we can learn about each of the courses in isolation. What I'm really hoping to do is tell a story about science or math from a programmatic perspective, a K-12 perspective. What is the progression of the high school in regards to how those courses lay out in a pathway? And then what, what is the building of the experience that a child's wanting to have kindergarten through fifth grade? So you're not constantly kind of flipping in and out, but we're looking at a story from, from a specific content. You know, and I think as, as my growth continues, you know, Marilyn Allen and I have had a lot of conversations around, you know, is this really a round content area or is this more about pathways? Is it about more of like interest in careers and what life is what you like? And what if, what would happen? What opportunities would present themselves if we arranged around that? So I think that that's, you know, we're, we're poised to make that, that, that transition. But noticing that right now, our first primary build is gonna be out of just looking at it from a content specific. What other things jumped out at you from the video that either was interesting or was a question?
I found a lot of value in seeing how the teachers go through the Canvas exercise. I think some of us have been interacting with Canvas a lot, others of us have not at all. So I thought it was really insightful for all of the ways we're using Canvas in the district. It's a great example.
It was so step-by-step and I liked the way that you put that together. So really, it's so user-friendly. The other piece was, and it's slide nine here, the refresh cycle. And just kind of, and we talked about that last year, I guess, when we had our first curriculum workshop. But I just love this idea of thinking about how we're using curriculum that we have, looking at it and saying, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense. But it's not just a yes or no, we've done it, check it off the box. But really, it's a, a breathing kind of activity.
Yeah, I think the, the main shift that I wanna accomplish is I want us, I want our cycle to be almost modular, meaning that we can react and be able to instill the next layer of maturity on our curriculum as, you know, we get better, as we learn. What we know today is gonna be the worst possible knowledge about curriculum that we have. Like, every year we're going to get better at it, we're gonna learn more. So with that in mind, we'll be able to develop that I have here. So with that in mind, we'll be able to develop that I have here, which I don't know what we need, but it's here, like our initial plans of what it will look like. So year one, what will year two look like, what will year three, what will year four? And we have laid out a plan for that. Well, what I love about what we've kind of designed is the fact that as we learn more, we can make changes and we're not stuck, you know? That because it's modular in nature, all we have to do is move one thing around and the cycle still continues. And it doesn't take us into a, well, we need this new platform, or we need this, we need to hire this new person to do this new thing. Taking that new module approach is going to be, going to be beneficial.
Another thing you and I spoke about today had to do with one of the pieces of curriculum we were looking at and realizing, okay, well, the way it's presented here, I know a few weeks ago, we looked at same course area, but a different grade level, and these aren't, they're not doing it quite the same yet. But the benefit will be that the year when they all refresh, they will all be looking at them together. So there's the chance to, you know, there's some things right now, but it's just not totally aligned because everybody's disjointed, they're not working on it at the same time. But I think that, you know, once we get through a cycle of everything, we're going to see some consistency through our subjects that it's really hard to produce until you all look at them concurrently, I think.
Yeah, we had the opportunity this week to gather our makerspace teachers. And one of the things that often happens is you get, you get stuck in your cycle, all right? And you don't realize that this other person is kind of doing the same thing in another building that's, you know, less than two miles away. So getting them both in the same room, we got a chance to talk about their own experiences and think about what does that lead to? And then we had that conversation, and they both, on their own, came to the same, with the same, you know, pre-thinking about that. But that is the sort of the model of what we're going to see in our first iteration. You're bringing people together in order to have some of those meeting conversations. And sure, we're on the same page, setting the foundation for decisions and growth that's going to happen later on. So, you know, that's really the main key. Like right now, we're operating in isolation, which is kind of what we've been doing for a number of years. And what we want to do is we want to be more systematic. So we want to look at math from a K-12 perspective. We want to get those people in a room and be able to talk through, well, what do we want to see out of mathematicians? You know, what does that look like? And then be able to craft that progression and lay it all on the table and be able to recognize what we're building on. A cry that we have heard a lot from our teachers is they really want more vertical collaboration. So we're building in systems for vertical collaboration. It's just natural. It's part of the cycle, part of what we do. And that's what we want to have. I did also want to bring up the, you know, the Canvas course that we're using right now. Obviously, it's the easiest way for them to know how to, you know, make a document, follow a template, and submit a document sort of for a grade and a grade book. So it became an easy way to deploy a little bit of training, you know, trying to get them ready. I've got a little video of me, just like I report for you guys, telling them a little bit of why we're doing what we're doing, why this document is important, give us how to do it, my usual way to think about it. But there is no substitute to getting people in a room. So, you know, this past week, again, having the makerspace teacher giving me to sit beside Joe Hubbard and talk about industrial technology, more learning from both of our sides happened when we're together in that space than we'll ever get arbitrarily going through a self-paced course. So it's been, it's been great to see that, and it's been very valuable for me to be able to get to meet with people, to talk through some of that.
The questions, too, that are on the Canvas site are deep-thinking questions. It's more than just, yes, I did this, or we put, we just a line here, why, or what's the goal? What's that going to be? And I think that was, I'm just really, I was very impressed. And so I'm glad that we've moved from that kind of, again, check the box, we did that, we put the line in, it's done, to really thinking about what this means and then what the, you know, the end result is going to be with our students.
And then seeing it translate to the new site, where you can kind of see even the course progression. Everybody's going to be able to see, what does it look like when I go to high school? If I want to end up here, I need to do all these things. It's not just a meeting with the counselor, it's, I can actually see it. So, it's all good stuff.
Yeah, and I think there's been some intentional designing around the fact that, you know, we want to start with their lives. So we're starting with their core values, and then that leads into their scope and sequence, and then that leads into their why this course exists, their rationale. They sort of have those pieces of the puzzle figured out. And then finally, we're ending with the curriculum template. So, you know, we're not necessarily starting with the standards, leading with the standards. Yeah, we're honoring them, but we also know that there isn't, there's something deeper than just, you know, the words that are sort of on the page there. And what's great is, again, because it's fresh in my mind, I keep going back to the makerspace conversation, we got almost all the way through the conversation, all the way through to the end, sort of like the curriculum template, and we pointed back over to our core values and said, do we have everything? And the answer, one of them about to bury the lead, it's coming from the core meeting, but there was a real desire for problem solving, one of the core values of makerspace. I can want kids to have experience with problem solving. And I said, did you capture that? Does your scope and sequence measure problem solving? Do you have that in your mind? Is that a part of your rationale? Is that really how you're designing the course? And that was a little bit of a challenge, because a lot of times, you know, we want to solve the problem for the kid. Like, you know, especially when you're in kindergarten, first grade, but you really want to make sure that there's a solid place within the level. And that's good, but we also want them to risk. We want them to take risks with some of those different scenarios that are hands-on and can really learn something, and we hope about themselves, but also about the properties of the materials that we're talking about. It was a good conversation, but we would not have had that sort of aha moment if we hadn't used the core values first, which was really important.
One other question, Chris, and we've talked about this before. We talk about the standards and how to handle them, out of them. Are, what are your thoughts on how to handle like state and federal laws that relate to some of these topic areas? And getting that kind of checked into our process?
Yeah, I think we respond to guidance from both the state from DESI, from, you know, any statutes, for example, like our dyslexia mandate, where we have to do a certain number of professional development hours. Whenever we receive anything like that, we bake that into our process and ensure that we are abiding by those different scenarios. So whenever a new law or a new, you know, guidance comes on the books, we have the systems in place to look at who, that, that is necessary.
Where do we get those from? Is it other than DESI? Is that the only place that we use as a resource?
MSBA obviously puts a lot of that guidance and informs a lot of the decisions. And then they reference statutes within their policies and regulations, which, you know, again, you get two different pieces to our policy. We've got the actual policy, and then we've got the administrative procedures. So those administrative procedures guide a lot of the day-to-day, the work that we do in order to make sure that, you know, eyes are dotted and teeth are puffed.
I think the other thing maybe to keep in mind is we've got, you know, the state, it's not the law, but the state, with all those standards that they like for us to integrate into certain courses. So they kind of provide some of that guidance. It's not necessarily the law, but it's something that we probably should look at and at some point integrate. You know, maybe we review process, and certainly we do, you know, things in our laws that may govern certain aspects of the curriculum or certain things that seem to fit within a particular course. Just out of the nature of the way the law is crafted, it seems to, it seems to provide direction in particular content areas. As you were talking about, that's one that I can look at, that I know I ask our cabinet to review every year. DESI has like a quality assurance checklist, and it's sort of, it's broken into different sections. And I ask people, can you read that and see, do we do all those things? Do we have it? Is it somewhere? I'd have to look to see, are any of those directed at curriculum? A lot of those are directed at a number of areas, from finance to facilities to just things to superintendence and charter. But I can look and see whether there's anything there that would be needed to look at that may impact curriculum.
Searching my drive, whatever the name of that document was. All right, any other questions from the video or things that were on your mind coming into town?
If you keep bringing us 12 at a meeting, you're going to be done. Not if you do them a dozen at a time. I know, I love it.
Let's transition to unfinished learning. Now, no matter where you search on the internet, you're going to get all sorts of different names for this. I chose unfinished learning for no reason. Just realizing that, okay, that's one. Could also be learning acceleration, and that's been one that a lot of people have talked about. And then I think there's another, interrupted learning is another one. Like, it's, you pick the buzzword and you'll be able to kind of walk through. So I think we should be on Slide 30, which kind of transitions into the next thing, right about there. Perfect, good job. So, next. So, when thinking about that, some of the things that we want to make sure is whenever we're making some decisions about coming into next year, what are some things that are on our radar? What are some things we can do? And what are some things that maybe are outside of systemically, being able to accomplish, you know, overnight or within a year? So, some of the research, which I've looked in some of the articles that were provided, that would ask school districts to potentially shift to a competency-based assessment system. Well, that's going to be hard to do in a year. Not that we couldn't do it. We've done amazing things with the work that we've done. I think adding this at this point in time might cause a need. So we might not want to shift in an assessment system. But what that is asking for us to do is potentially eliminate points and look at a way to categorize through either proficiency scale or scoring guide student performance. So instead of kids getting a 79, which, whatever 79 means, it could be a percentage, it could be a number of raw points, but shifting to a way where you say, this student is on track, this student is exceeding. But we see this in our K-5 report card, where they use the qualifiers to sort of describe student performance. So that's one of the recommendations. What you're seeing right now is a lot of the work that's happening in our buildings of determining exactly what is high-value and hazardous. The state is doing that with priority standards, and each of our buildings are doing that exact same work of like, do we really need to do this unit, this activity, this lesson? In the transition to Canvas, that's really allow our teachers the second guess of whether or not that activity is really worth it. If it really worth doing all the steps to get it loaded up to be a page in Canvas? Or does it not really provide value? There's a number of other ones on there, but I really want to focus on the second to last one, which is the sense of belonging. We know that social and emotional learning is really the foundation of success, both in apt and, but also the more research that we look at what is going on around the country, we're seeing research that as simple as having a teacher stand at the doorway and do some sort of welcome to the student increases student engagement by 20%. Little things like that make a tremendous difference, and we need all the little things. We don't need a bunch of big things. We need all those little things, because all those little things stack up and they make a difference. So, you know, if we lose our favorite, our project, favorite activity, but we invest in caring deeply about our kids and our families, we will see the academic growth well exceed all of our expectations. And that's what you see in the last developed song for the workshops. So all of that stuff is not Kristoff. That is from the resources, from the research that's been provided, and all of that is cited. So that's going to be a big piece of what we see in our professional development coming back to school. So, first slide, thoughts, reactions, before we jump into the next data piece.
I love seeing those last two bullets. They're fantastic.
All right, our next slide, talking about data, is, you know, really recognizing what data we have. Right now, we don't, as a district, have a systemic way to look at data. Each of our buildings do it really well. The key thing is as a district for us to look at that data, and we're going to continue to work on that. But the beautiful thing we have is we now have a new tool, which you've heard about a lot, which is NWA. The greatest thing about that tool is it starts in kindergarten, and the last time is 10th grade that a student takes that assessment. So the idea that we're able to vertically have a real great picture. You'll have three data points this year, plus, you know, more data points next year. We'll be able to tell a really great growth and learning story. And again, the focus of NWA, why we selected that, is really its focus on growth, okay? It is great if a child is advanced on the math test. It is even more exciting to me when a child grows from below basic to basic, or below basic to proficient. Really focusing in and honing in on growth is really an exciting opportunity for us. And we see some of those other data points that are on there. And like I said, NWA allows us to use the strategies to group kids, and as you heard from Lauren today, even develop entire courses based on student's performance. And then providing some enrichment opportunities when a kid walks in and really, you know, one of the greatest fallacies is they think that kids have lost so much this year. They have lost a lot, but they've also learned some ridiculous things that we can, there's no way for us to measure how awesome our kids have been at adapting, creating new things, working on their own. They have overcome tremendous adversity, and we now truly captured all of that.
I think it'll be great to see how NWA does as our kids move from building to building. Because I feel like one of the challenges that we've identified, that often we can feel as a board when we, I forget what do we call that meeting, when we go from table to table with the different schools, that sometimes we feel like the transition from one building to another, it gets confusing about, you know, if they were reading at this level at this building, but then they got to this building when they first got tested, it didn't seem like that's really how they were reading. I wonder if NWA won't smooth some of that transition out. I guess we'll find out over time, but...
It's like one school being able to speak Spanish and the other one Latin.
Right.
We really want to use all of the same language, because then we start off the conversation much further along.
How is it with our, just curious, because NWA is going to be for us, and possibly the state. I don't know a whole lot about it, and it says for national comparisons. What's the buy-in on NWA nationally, the utilization of it?
It's very wide. I don't know the number. I'm certain I can Google that in the time that we're here. But again, it's one of those ones that not only does it have a national percentile, but it can also predict performance on our state assessment. It can also predict performance on the NCT as young as fifth grade. It also can, you know, yes, like insert, it cannot do your taxes for you, but I feel like it does have some really great connections and opportunities. And the thing that I like the most about it is the fact that it does, one, focus on growth, but two, it is a nonprofit organization and truly is designed to improve learning. And that's their, that's their ship, and that's somebody I want to be in business with as a partner.
Do we run the risk of tracking kids into a rut if we predict too early whether they'll be successful or not?
Always. Yeah, always. And that's why our building administrators often talk about triangulating the data. We can't just use one piece of data. We've got to use anecdotal notes from what happened in the classroom. We've got to use, you know, benchmark assessments that we're using within our curriculum tool. But yeah, we always run into that, and whether that's our own bias or the system is like, well, we have to have an honor of sixth grade class, and we have to have an honors this or that. All those are opportunities to get, you know, to create track of them.
Don't some states allow NWA to be used instead of their state test? I mean, isn't there some hope that Missouri might eventually let us use our NWA tests?
Lots of hope. This would have been the year, of all years.
Yeah, of all years.
This would have been the perfect year poised to do that. But that did not happen, sadly. But one of the adjustments that we've made internally is like this year, we've chosen to typically take the NWA assessment and then follow the state assessment with the hopes that, you know, some of that practice will translate. Some of the ideas of thinking through the assessment will prepare kids, you know, maybe for the state assessment. But this year, we've chosen to put that, because we've seen what NWA has done, and we really want to get that, you know, the last piece of data to be as close to our kids and as close to our classroom. And we get this data back the next day. We get this data back from the state sometime in October.
Maybe.
It's not helpful.
Maybe, sure.
Yeah, if they're satisfied with it, maybe they'll give it to us in October.
So knowing that, now, our third graders, or third grade classroom, or third grade principals, or third grade, all of that stuff, have the last piece of data from second grade. And it's right there, and it's accessible, and it's available, and it's uploaded to Tyler. And it's, you know, all those pieces of the puzzle are opportunities for us to make better decisions.
Do you feel like kids, and including our kids, their parents understand the utilization of NWA along with what the math testing is? Speaking just from like, you know, my kids, they were like, oh, there's another test. It's like, well, you know, it's kind of hard to get good data when you've got a kid that's grunting and groaning about heading into another standardized test that's, or you know what I mean, that measures the ability of the district, that maybe are we approaching it the right way? So that maybe the parents understand and can relay that to our kids. And that was my kid, even with me having a generalized understanding about it, that I can only imagine what the other kids are like, and that it could possibly skew some of our data that we really do need. Because the kids can approach it with, it's another, you know, do the best you can, you know, not giving us our true measurements.
Yeah, I would say that adopting a new assessment system during pandemic is probably not the best thing to do. And then probably don't adopt an assessment system that they call MAP, Measures of Assessment in Progress, when our state assessment is also called a MAP. So yeah, I think we have a marketing problem. And I think we have to use some marketing tools to accomplish that. I think part of the conversation, both with Canvas and NWA, has got to be that, you know, we've got to be at our buildings, at our in-person events, at our open houses, in our Zoom calls, or whatever it was we're doing, doing the work, and really be in the trenches. And that's what I, that's the approach that we need to take. That's obviously what we would have done this year. We would have had a Canvas table at every open house if this would have been a normal year. And I think we just have, we've got to do a little more than a recorded webinar here and then relay some of those gains.
I see this potential personally. I mean, just even within my own household, with my kids, you know, just thinking for my families. And it just, I'm very impressed by NWA. Because I just, I want my kids to be impressed, but that's another test. You know, what are you going to do?
Yeah, the cool thing that happened, sort of an accident, is that, you know, a kid finished their NWA test, and it gives them immediate results. So the kid took a picture of struggling and texted it to their parents. And their parents notified me of their score, not you, but something like that.
I know, it was not me, I'm just laughing. I'm laughing as I hear this, you're rolling.
But what was great about it was the pride. I came home with that, like, you know, it shows me where I want to be, and look how good I did. And I'm sure that with my mom, you know, in that instance. And like, those are the things you're never going to get from a math test. And you're never going to get, you know, from even a test that a teacher did often, because you don't have that immediate response of getting the results right away and knowing where you are on a national percentile. So some of those things are really exciting. And I'll give a great, again, focus on growth. Where were you last time? Let's try and, let's set a goal, and let's work to achieve whatever that is.
That's great.
Thank you.
Dr. McGee, I just want to, you've just said it, that I think is going to be helpful, I think, for older kids especially, because I think, or parents maybe, and generally too, once you have gone through this assessment a couple of times, and you start focusing on growth and not the number, right? I think that's going to be key, because I think, you know, I just think that that, you know, it's easy to either be, oh yeah, I got this great score, or, oh, look it, I expected to get this lousy score for whatever reason, right? But once you're not focused on the score, but you're focused on growth, and you start to see that trend line, I think that's where that value's going to come into play as a, you know, from older students understanding kind of maybe what they do need to work on, or parents working with younger kids on what they need to work on. I just think that's part of that marketing, I think. That's why I just wanted to comment, because I think that's a big part of that marketing.
Yeah, and we're kind of attacking it from two angles. One, you know, in working with Marilyn Allen and Mary Jinta, the success writing team is really focusing on what could an interface look like that really captures a lot of those opportunities and growth that we're seeing. And then second of all, we're really pushing back against NWA and saying, we want kids to be able to log into whatever portal and see their own score. We're seeing that at Rogers right now, where teachers are having one-on-one conversations and setting goals based on the NWA data. And right now, it's a hard process of, you know, 107 PDFs, which is the way it's set up. And we're really trying to push back at that to order for kids to be able to access and log in and see their own data. So that is something we really want to see happen.
From a marketing standpoint, wasn't there a band by this name or something?
No, it was NWA.
And it's probably not something we'd want to have at the district level.
Maybe nowadays, they resusciate with a band name.
There's a wrestling award.
That's what I keep thinking of it, but I don't know anything about it, so. Obviously, that was a bad thing to bring up.
Funny.
All right, next slide, just talked to you a little bit about how to box solutions. These are not ones that are going to all be adopted tomorrow. But these are things that are always that people are looking at trying to either catch kids up or give kids different experiences. I think when we look at the deficit mindset of kids coming in, having lost something, we end up in a very different situation where we try to set an aspirational goal and then provide supports to achieve that. So these are some of the ones that are on there. And again, some of them will be immediately shut down, because they're just not feasible to make happen. But there are some of those things on that list. Again, these are not out of Chris's heads. These are from the resources that I've provided and have been sort of proven, if you will. But we see things like weeding the garden. We see a lot of that happening. We're not going to do that unit. We're not going to do that activity. And because it doesn't provide us with value. It's not an absolute that needs to happen. And then again, infusing a lot of that social emotional support. We need to have less on the scope and sequence in order for us to make sure we're okay. Because if, you know, it's that. Education speak is these two great scientists. You've got Maslow, and you've got Bloom. So Maslow is your hierarchy of needs. You know, do you feel safe, you're secure? Can you do all the things that you can operate your life? So you've got a Maslow. And then over here, you've got Bloom, which is Bloom's test item in a higher order than Bloom's skills. Okay, well, if you are not in a safe space, and you don't have any needs met, and some tragedy has occurred in your life, you are not going to operate at your full mental capacity, be able to be dedicated to the work. So you've got a Maslow before you Bloom, just what they said. So that concept of being able to fuse that into the work and really seeing our kids has got to be a job number one in the work that we're doing.
That's good. That's a great analogy.
Tell us what you really think.
And then the next couple slides, first of all, you know, working through curriculum prioritization. I, you know, I ask principals and recognizing that there are a number of different tools that they've all used in order to make sure, you know, like, what are the most important things? I wanted to give you just a quick snapshot of two examples. One's out of Lean Six Sigma, and one's from EAB. EAB is a resource we use a lot, because they have proven strategies. And they provide them in the Louse's Sham, so they have great tools for that. And then the other piece I wanted to add, go ahead, Mike.
Real quick, Jordan, I forgot to ask a question about the earlier. This just reminded me. You talked earlier about why does a class, why does a course exist? Has that question ever been answered with, this course shouldn't exist?
As a matter of fact, yes. And we're making some adjustments even now for next year, because we're recognizing it's not the need. You know, in high school, it's pretty easy, it doesn't make, you know? But it doesn't always exist in the elementary up to middle school. So, you know, being able to really look and ask that question, you often get the long stares of like, why is third grade math? Because it's required for us to have math in third, yeah, but why? What is so critical in third grade? If they didn't have this, the whole deck of cards would come crashing down. Having that conversation with teachers has been really helpful in forces that, well, this is really the big deal that we need to focus on.
That's great.
And then the next slide is really kind of looking at Canvas. While we know it's not perfect, we do know that it has given us some gains. And some of these gains, we see, and I made just a quick list of some things that have gone well. The list that have gone not well is obviously one to be there as well. But some of these things have really provided a unique opportunity, both for our staff members, but now our families get a completely new look at the day-to-day operations and what goes on in the classroom. Because they can take on that observer role and see, you know, the daily activities and interactions and the way the class is set up in the classroom. So we're excited about it. It's a whole mutation, and we're continuing to add to it. All right, in the next slide, we've just got three words we're working on, because I think they're going to be key to our success moving forward, which is scaffolding, differentiation, and personalization. Those are, as you speak, you know, those are educator words. So I wanted to make sure that you kind of get the idea of what we're talking about when you do that. So the key thing for everybody to know going into next year is that a fourth grader is going to be taught fourth grade, fourth grade math, you know, at a fourth grade level. And if they missed something from either third grade or second grade or anything like that, then we're going to provide an opportunity through scaffolding and support for that child to be successful on break. What we often end up is we go back to second grade and say, they didn't learn this. Well, then we've created a new trajectory that does not end at break up. You never end up catching up. So we want to start always out with grade-level content, and we provide support and guidance and enrichment when necessary.
I really appreciated the article that you linked us to for this. I mean, there were a few. If you go to Edutopia, you can really like go down a rabbit hole. I'm not sure if anybody else went down the rabbit hole with me in the last few days, but I've read quite a bit. But these terms particularly, I found it really helpful to get a better understanding of what we mean when we use them. Because it's easy to misuse them and think you understand. But especially knowing that there's research backing up. No, don't say, well, you missed this content, so we're going to keep shooting you over there while everybody else moves forward, that that does really more damage than it does good. Interesting to read about.
And then finally, the last slide is just, okay, so all this is only good. What happens when the rubber meets the road? So what are the actual things that are in place for back to school? So I've kind of outlined, I see my PDF is a little, I updated it since then. So if you're on the link, you get to see the updated version. But it just reorganized, you know, what things are professional development experiences that we have, you know, signed contracts with the vendor, and we have scheduled them, and they will be here. So, you know, these are sort of guaranteed professional development that we'll be doing during back to school. And then some systemic supports that we will put in, that we have in place. And then continuing the integration of my team with building leadership to ensure that there isn't a separation between support and the day-to-day operations of each of the buildings. All right, questions, comments, concerns? Things I didn't cover that you really wanted me to talk about?
Your note, your note on that last one, I'm on your link, professional development support, focus on caring for the caregivers is what is... That's a whole run right there.
Yeah, we recognize that, you know, again, Maslow before you Bloom, right? So we know that people are going to be, even coming out of the pandemic, operating at a level of anxiety that is not their base level. So recognizing that whether that is a strategic professional development event, or whether that's a level of support that we're giving, or honestly, it's a welcome distraction. You know, trying to find ways in which to engage people. And I quote Valerie Brinkman, our coordinator of professional learning, to design something each month that really focuses on the teacher and gives them the support that they need. So we're putting them at the front to make sure that they don't have compassion fatigue, which is real, they can respond to their, not only their own troubles they've endured, but also to support children. We're recognizing that we don't take care of our people first.
I'm just so reassured to see how much thought has already been put into all this, because to some extent, we just don't know what it's going to look like when kids get back until it happens. But I, you know, I think, like you guys have done for so much of what we experienced in the last year, we won't just be reacting. I mean, you've put a lot of thought into it. You're working with staff already thinking about it. And I, so I really appreciate that. It's reassuring going into the summer, knowing that next year, the fall is just, it's just going to be strange. There's going to be a lot of great things, but there's also just a lot of anxiety surrounding it for everybody involved. So I appreciate all this late work.
Yeah, I really, I really appreciate like what Jordan pointed out, the whole idea of identifying the teachers as the caregiver in this situation. That's good.
Yeah, I mean, I said, there's a reason why I saved up the last, because, you know, I mean, I intended to put note, but no matter what we do, everything else relies on that last note. And we can't do the other stuff unless we make sure that we care for our staff. Any other questions? If I can let you know. Yay, you did it.
Excellent. You had such a big night today.
I did, a lot, a lot of risks.
Okay, so if we're wrapped up for our curriculum workshop, then we're on to section 11, which is board comments. And it's only 8:30. I feel like we've been doing board comments at like 9:30 the last few times we've been together, so.
Let's not go back to that.
No.
I was thinking of having the new norm.
We will not accept that as our new norm. But let's start tonight. Jordan, can we start with you?
Sure, okay. So something, you know, Dr. Brock brought up a point where our high school and our bus drivers opened up during the event. A little less known would be the AFTON Elks opened up their doors. We not necessarily, it was some for the school, but it was more for the evacuation area, which I don't think I had to tell you, was our students, our families. So I would like to just give a special note to the Elks for opening up their doors and helping our community. May 1st, School Principals Day. I apologize to our principals on video, or wherever they may be. We appreciate you and love you. And then Teacher Appreciation Week, you know? Which, in my humblest opinion, and being raised by a teacher, every week should be Teacher Appreciation Week, but the fact that we have an official one approaching is all more reason to celebrate. And to wrap up my notes, I just have basically three words. Dr. McGee, phenomenal. You, I can't say anything more. You never cease to amaze us, and thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jordan. And then let's hop over to Bridget.
Same as him, Dr. McGee, thank you. It's amazing. You did a great job. I also want to thank our principals and our teachers.
Great, thank you. Patricia, how about you next?
Absolutely. The curriculum workshop is one of the things I really look forward to. And there's so much content. And I really appreciate that you have put a lot of forethought into it, gave us stuff to look at in advance so that we could come tonight and really have some understanding to be able to ask some questions. So thank you for that. And the videos, I enjoy your videos, by the way. Do you think it's weird?
My 11-year-old loved it so much that he had to send us the clip. Daxton would like to use that for a presentation. So that is his, those are his peers, fifth grade boys.
That's about right. Is that what I heard you say? Yes?
Anyway, so thank you for that. Also, I want to mention that I, along with some other board members that were there the second day, but I was there on Thursday for the research presentations for our AP students at the high school. but I was there on Thursday for the research presentations for our AP students at the high school. They were fantastic. It was great to be able to be present and to support them. And this is the type of activity that I like to see us doing. And so I know our board is continuing to support AP and some of these things. And you could really see it with these students in their presentations. It was really great. Reminder that the Board Professional Learning Community is next Thursday night, the thirteenth at seven. Everyone should have gotten an email about that and hopefully you can attend. It's on Zoom. And as we move forward, we want to just make sure that we're collaborating and working with our, our colleagues throughout the region because we do have a lot of regional issues, regional things that we can work on together. So please, kind of you can. Thank you to all of our teachers, since it is Teacher Appreciation Week. And for everything that they're doing, we are very fortunate and happy to have some fantastic teachers. And so we all know that. And then I'm very humbled and moved. I did not realize you were going to be giving me gifts tonight. So thank you very much. I appreciate being appreciated. It, it, it was an interesting three years, to say the least. But, and I've said this, I think in every meeting that I was president for, I really do sincerely appreciate this board. I don't think that I would have been able to be successful to, as a president, to help us move forward as a district without really great people who care so much about making good things happen.
Thank you. Kenny, come over to you.
Okay, well, I gotta say, Dr. McGee, you do make curriculum fun. I never would have thought it. But your presentations, your commitment to the reports, I mean, there's so much there and I, I enjoy it. Yeah, I mean, I never really knew anything about curriculum until I got on the board and here it is. I'm enjoying it. But I do appreciate everything you do. And, and that goes for everybody else's reports that we get from, even from Lauren Whitmer and I, Katie Miras or anyone else. I don't express enough gratitude to, for all the hard work that goes into these things. And I do appreciate all our teachers this weekend, all the rest of the weeks, and the principals. And also appreciate the district and Dr. Brock working towards vaccinating everybody that wants to be vaccinated in our district to hopefully move ahead and be a nice, healthy community again and we could go back to normal. So that's what I got. Thanks.
Justin.
Yeah, Dr. McGee, I just, to pile on the group hug. But seriously, I, you know, I, I think, you know, I know you've been in the audience when I've talked about, you know, with Steve and Krista and kind of the evolution of making budget accessible. I feel the same way about the curriculum and I, and what you've done with the videos, the, the links, the rabbit holes were, you know, I, I didn't dive down all of them, but I found a couple that were very compelling, scaffolding and some other things that, that just really added value to just the curriculum overview, you know, those, those were rabbit holes. They, they added value. And I, I appreciate your, your desire to just make that accessible to us and anyone who might have been watching and knowing that the dashboard and the things that you are doing that will also make it accessible to parents and families and teachers and bringing that together. I just see some real value in, in continuing to move in that direction. So I appreciate it. And the second thing I want to say was just, I really appreciated the communication and I will say the over-communication and the adequate over-communication during the, during the, the chemical fire and everything. I don't mean over-communication in any sort of negative connotation at all, you know? And it was just really nice knowing what was going on. As a parent whose kid was, you know, twenty feet away, you know, doing virtual school, it was still just really reassuring as I'm looking out my, you know, my home office window and seeing the plume of black smoke coming, you know, right towards us at the high school. And just kind of knowing that you knew, you know, the administration knew and what was going on. They were on top of it. And had our kids and our teachers and our families in mind. I just really appreciate it.
Thank you. For her?
Well, I also want to say thank you to the teachers and the principals for what they're doing. And to Patricia for what you've done the last three years. And it's, it's been an interesting time for us as a board, but it's, we've gotten through it and it's good. And I think we're moving forward. I think the tone tonight is really important. And I'm glad we had the curriculum presentation here tonight because it does set a tone of focusing on the kids and getting, getting our priorities aligned. And I think it was, I think that was good. And I have to say, we haven't completed the swing yet. And I know you wouldn't disagree with that of getting this thing going. But I will tell you, I feel the best about our curriculum than I've felt over my fifteen years on the board. I just, this is the best we've gotten. And if we can finish it and get it to where it bridges to the families, bridges to the students and gives the teachers the tools they need, this is, this is pretty cool what we're doing. So, thank you.
All right, well, so many thanks have been given that I agree with and were wonderful. And you all spoke so generously and eloquently tonight. So thank you for that. One thing that I just want, that I want to note, there have been a few different times in this year when there's been something where I thought, oh, my gosh, we could have never known last year how important doing this was. And one of the things that often comes up is having Sarah Springer on staff. Like, we knew we wanted an H R person, but we had no idea that it was going to be right before a pandemic and where we needed someone working with all of that. And another thing was just the two-way radios. I mean, it, it's not something that I would have really understood what a big deal that was. But knowing that our bus drivers and I was driving home right after the explosion happened, started happening. And I saw buses all over the place and I just, but I knew that they were being communicated with in a much more straightforward way. But who could have thought, oh, better get two-way radios. You never know when an explosion is going to start happening in your community. So, you know, sometimes you just don't even realize how important things are going to be and then they turn out to be the most important things. Also, I, I do want to just, like everyone, say thanks to teachers and principals. One of the things I'm noticing right now is as we get ready to wrap the year up, last year, kids were missing out on so many of the fun milestones. And we just, a lot of it, your hands were just tied. You know, everybody wanted to do things for them, but we really didn't even know what was safe or wasn't safe. And I'm enjoying just seeing all the creative ways the teachers and principals are coming up with to help their kids transition from this year to the next. And especially, I have a soft spot in my heart for kids moving buildings because I had one transition building last year and I have one this year as well. And I just appreciate how hard they're working to make kids feel honored and valued and acknowledge the transitions that they're making. So I really appreciate that. And I'm so excited about summer school. I mean, in large part because my eleven-year-old is going to be leaving the house every day for a month. And he is excited and I am excited. We're just all so excited. But the program itself, I, I just, it sounds like it's going to be a great summer. It's going to be just a good chance for a lot of kids who haven't been able to be in school to be there and to be safe. I mean, I think we, we've proven we can do this safely. So I'm excited about that. And I'm thankful for all the people who are working hard to make that happen. So on that note, I don't have my right screen opened. Yes. We need a motion to adjourn. The administration recommends an ISO move that the board approve the executive meeting regarding pursuant personnel dissection six one zero point zero two one three. Do I have a second?
Second.
And this requires a roll call vote. So we'll start, Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes? That's a seven to zero. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned and let's take.
I need to adjust that motion in terms of, we, we're not approving the executive meeting, right?
Oh, did I, okay. Do we need to do something different?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Yes, there we go.
Oh, sorry.
I couldn't think of what it was.
Well, that's just the subject line, though. That's not actually the, the motion is the recommended action.
Right. But I think, anyway, it's, sorry, I think the wording there could be adjusted a little bit.
Okay, so do we need to say it again now?
I think we all know what we meant.
I think it's okay to forget.
Yeah, it's okay for now. I'm just saying, I just.
Um, let's, I mean, let's take five minutes.
Chris is like, shut up.
Yeah, let's, I mean, let's kind of pour a shoe around this area. I think, so the recommended action needs to be written?
No, not yet.
Okay, because I have to follow the clear. You're saying that this is not written for, for recommended action?
That is correct.
And is it usually written in a different way?
It's written in a different way.
Are we staying in here?
Okay, thank you.
Are we staying in here? I noticed the desk and the other room were moved around.
Oh, are we moving to the other room?
I don't know. I'm just asking. I noticed they were in the old executive session.
I think we've been staying in here.
Yeah, I just, let's see. I like the, I like the big open.